So, give me just a minute.
It's wonderful in your Ted. Oh, that's interesting.
Okay, we're ready to go.
Are we live? Okay, welcome. It is January 3rd, 2024, to the Kaysville Planning Commission.
It's not January 3rd, it's January 11th.
It is January 11th. Sorry, this says January 3rd.
That's when the staff report was done.
It is January 3rd. The staff report, I'm looking in one place. Usually the agenda's on here. It's January 11th for the Kaysville Planning Commission. We have a quorum and we will move forward. Since we do not have the meeting minutes for the last meeting, I am going to...
Do we not have them?
No.
Melinda, I don't think our speakers are...
Meeting minutes were not in the packet?
No, no meeting minutes in the packet.
All right, that was my fault, I apologize.
No, I saw them, I read through them, but I wasn't here for the meeting.
Okay. So we wouldn't have enough to vote on in any way?
I doubt it, yeah.
So, and I will make them, I just will ask for a motion that we push the meeting minutes for the last meeting off to the next meeting for approval.
I'll second the motion.
Is that a motion?
I can't make the motion.
I'll make a motion that we, that we continue action on the minutes from the last meeting in December to a subsequent meeting.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Our first item on the agenda tonight for action is a conditional use permit for a single-family dwelling in the Central Commercial District located at 114 North, 100 West, for Randy Graham, and I will turn time over to staff.
Okay. Over on 114 North and 100 West, there is a vacant lot that used to have a duplex on it, and they tore it down and it's vacant lot now. It's on the, I guess it'd be the northeast side of that intersection. It's .20 acres, it's 8,712 feet, and it's in the Central Commercial District. These folks, Randy Graham, called and wanted to, submitted an application with a permit, and we found that since it's in commercial, Central Commercial, dwellings are permitted, but it'd have to have a conditional use, so that's why we're here. The owners would like to build a garage with some living space attached to it, so basically it's a house, dwelling. The parcel, or the building, is a... Hold down here a little bit. So the project is two-story building. The main floor is 642 of the living space. The main floor, the garage, is 27, 25, and there's a loft upstairs that's 950 feet. And the footprint is 3,000 square feet, it's 50 by 60. It's 30 foot, 11 inches overall height, but to figure your average heights, you go with the average grade, the average gable, it put it around 21, I believe. And so there's a total square footage of the building space is 3950. The setbacks are 11 feet from the front, 11 from the roof. It is five yard on the north, or five foot side yard on the north, next to the auto mechanics, and 42 to the south, so the frontage from the north side of the street, which would be 100 north, is 42 feet, so it's going to be pushed, tied up against the other buildings. The materials for the construction are going to be hardy board frame with the metal roof. They have illustrations for the garage. And the building is attached to the north side, it would be for the dwelling part, and then you can see the loft windows up above. There's no setback requirements in the Central Zone Commercial, and they probably left it at the five feet so that the fire department would be able to, or the building department would require a bunch of fire prevention, firewalls, stuff like that. And so that, they maintain the proper yards for, to prevent all that. And I think that's pretty much all the information that I have here for you as far as the building. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer if I didn't cover everything.
Does anyone on the commission have questions? Okay. Pardon?
The green button, is it not?
Can you hear me?
None of them are working?
No.
Can we pass this around? Okay. Yeah, there's another one, I'll see if that one will work too.
And there's also one other thing I'd like to add is, there are some standards here we included in the packet here, and you can go through those, and if you have any conditions, they would have to meet those standards there, or those standards. Staff recommends approval of the dwelling unit in Central Commercial.
Thank you. I don't really have questions as much as, it just seems kind of odd. I mean, the zoning is commercial, which allows for a residential use, but the way the building is being built, it really looks like it's a commercial use that has a small dwelling as part of it. So I guess the question I have is, is the, is the use on this property restricted to residential? Can it be both? Can they have a commercial use in this building as well as having the dwelling because of the commercial zoning? Or is it just an allowance for residential use in the Central Commercial?
What I haven't asked really their use, if they did want to conduct business with the dwelling over it, they'd probably have to get a mixed-use overlay if they's going to live there with a business. I mean, I'm not sure if I'm right, but...
Yeah.
Yeah, you are.
Yeah, that's just, I'm kind of like, I'm just only concerned about whether, I mean, it's owned Central Commercial, and so if somebody wanted to have a commercial business here, they'd be fine to do that, to come in with a business license, and they can just have a residential dwelling as part of the building?
No, not without a mixed-use overlay.
Okay, I think that, okay.
Do you want to have the applicant come up? So why don't we have the applicant come up and answer any questions? State your name.
Randy Graham.
Thank you.
Would you, is there an, so we're not going to use it, it's not meant to be used for any type of business. Honestly, it's, the lot was purchased to improve the neighborhood in the area, to match the houses that are just to the west of it will be the same, so it's going to be an upper-end building. It's not going to, you know, as you can see from the plans, it'll be considered more of a high-end, single-family dwelling.
So you're just trying to match the architecture with the existing neighborhood?
Yep.
And then you're just going to rent or live in the upper half?
Possibly.
Okay, that's fine. Does any other commissioners have any questions? Okay, cool, thank you.
That it?
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
So the slide in front of you now are the standards that we have in our code. If the planning commission wishes to add conditions, these would be the standards that you would use to apply conditions to the building. Nope.
So commissioners, any thoughts on conditions, or do we need to do anything else?
It looks to me like the proposal meets the standards under 17-30-8. Did staff have any findings in terms of non-compliance? It sounds like your recommendation was that you found compliance with those.
Right, it's, they're there as far as I could find.
And it looks like the building provides a minimal setback. I mean, it's really flexible, the Central Commercial zoning provides flexibility and setbacks that a residential zone wouldn't provide such flexibility.
Right, in our zone, there's no setbacks required, so they took it upon themselves to make the required setbacks to meet building code without doing a bunch of stuff that costs a lot of money, but we're good with that too.
Yeah, based on the Central Commercial zoning, and the building looks nice, it's just a little bit of a different animal I haven't seen before, but I don't have any concerns with it now that the mixed-use overlay's been talked about.
If not, I entertain a motion.
I would make a motion to, I'll get back to my, approve, what I'm looking for, the conditional use permit for 114 North, 100 West. As recommended by staff.
We'll start...
I'll second that.
Second, thank you. We'll start with Commissioner L., or Paul?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And that passes. Thank you.
Where do you find the standard listed in Section 3? Is that, that would be David's list of what? Is that a list that others?
Yeah, so they're in our zoning code in 17-30, but we think what you have submitted meets all of those standards. So you, I don't think you need to do anything from this point forward, so I'll let our building department know tomorrow that we can send that on for plan review. Yep, so you already submitted everything to the building division, and we just needed to get this planning and zoning approval before we sent that on out, or did the plan review, so we can get that going for you tomorrow. Well, state law gives us 14 days to review a single-family dwelling, so no more than that. You're welcome.
Okay. Okay, so we will go to item number four, which is preliminary plat subdivision for the old library subdivision located at 44 North Main Street. And this is a preliminary plat for subdivision, and this is, I'll turn it over to staff.
Well, this is exciting. We, the city council last year approved, well, we received proposals from a couple different companies to see about redeveloping the old library. One of those approval, or one of those proposals was approved by the city council. We entered into an exclusive negotiation agreement with them, and the intent is to bring a food hall to the old library. In order to do that, we need to change the zoning, it's owned public use, and that zone doesn't allow for those types of uses, and so we've got the plat drawn up, and it is kind of an odd shape, but that's due to the use that, we wanted to capture everything that would be, all the property that would be used for that commercial use. They intend to have some food trucks, and so we included some of the area, the grass area in front of the building, and this is the first step in the process to get that rezone, so once this subdivision is approved, we'll bring forward a rezone to the planning commission and then the city council to change that, probably to Central Commercial, and we're hoping to keep moving this project forward. So this is in the public use zone. It's just a slide of the block that we sit on here. And then, like I said, this subdivision is kind of an odd shape, it's just over 15,000 square feet. And we're recommending approval. Yeah. You have a question?
Yeah, just to clarify, this is the city property right here next to us, correct?
Yes.
Right here?
Yeah, so this entire block out here, or outlined in blue, is city property. So the intent that we're looking at at this point is to lease the ground to Bamberger for their food hall, and then we would probably switch ownership of the building over to them, but again, the zoning, we need to have a separate parcel so that we can change the zoning. So it is an odd shape, but it will fit the uses, and one of the things that, like I said, they wanted to do some food trucks, and so this grassy area right out here, just north of the big tree, we wanted to make sure that we included that in the rezone so that, you know, they're consistently using that with a commercial use that we're not, yeah, that we're not having that commercial use on the public use zone, so we're just trying to follow our own ordinances.
Crossing Ts and dotting Is.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I mean, this works, I mean, the question I had, obviously you've drawn this, had this surveyed, there's no public monuments or anything, obviously within this scope of this survey, that that's all to the north or to the south of this, correct?
When you mean public monuments, like, we did not include in this area...
Your signage.
The sign that we have, our marquee sign is not included in that, so that's why you see that kind of odd jog up at the north end, and then we did want to include all of the area that they intend to landscape, so that line on the south where it kind of jogs out is just to include that grass area where they intend to have the food trucks located, so it is, again, it is a bit of an odd shape, but it does meet the code, and we're recommending approvals. The city engineer has reviewed this, doesn't have any concerns at this time.
Have we know commissioners with preliminary plats? We see them, we trust that all the boxes have been checked, looks like they have. What is your, does anybody have any further questions on this?
I, hey, we're working. I noticed a couple of errors. The planning commission, it's, as chairman of the Kaysville City Commission, that should be changed. The boxes below, they're, I was often cutting and pasting with engineers, and they're moving between jurisdictions, and so I would just encourage our city engineer to go through and correct all those errors. There are a few little errors down there in the language, so...
Okay.
But the first box, the second box in from the left, it says Chairman, Kaysville City Commission, and you don't want to have those kind of errors going through and being recorded. So...
We'll make sure that's corrected.
Yep.
Let me just say that this took like eight months to get, so... There was another error that we found, and we'll make sure that when that comes forward for final plat, that it's corrected.
Yeah. And does the council approve subdivision plats in Kaysville, or is the planning commission?
Good question. We are in the middle of changing the subdivision ordinance, and so we had that ordinance in front of the city council at the last meeting, and they wanted to see some changes, so we didn't want to delay this any further, and felt like getting it on the agenda would be appropriate at this time. We may have the subdivision ordinance back in front of them next week, and regardless, going forward, no, final plat will only be approved by staff after February 1st, which is the laws that the state put in place, so...
And I'll, if I can interject, we felt with the new 15-day review period, that we recommended that staff become the arbiter of that because of that, there's such a short turnaround time, there's some of these efficiencies sometimes that you have to do because of legislation.
Yeah. Then I would just encourage that the signature blocks be, reflect that accordingly. Whoever the land use authority is on this one, just, yeah, correct those signature blocks. You just don't want to have those kinds of errors being recorded, so...
Okay.
Other than that, I don't have any concern.
Any other discussion then? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the old library subdivision, preliminary plat presented by staff with their findings and with a recommendation or with a requirement, I'm not sure what we can do here, Melinda, would it be a recommendation from the planning commission, to just double-check and cross the Ts and dot the Is on the signature blocks and the language, because it does look like it's, I won't say sloppy, but it's just say that it's in flux, and there are several errors that I would recommend that you correct before moving forward.
So I have a motion, second?
I'll second.
Thank you. We'll start with Mike.
Aye.
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 And that passes unanimously, thank you. So, next-gen item is Kaysville bylaws, the Kaysville City Planning Commission. This has been a discussion item, we, when, gee, it's been probably three years ago, we revamped this, no longer than that, it's before COVID, just after I came on planning commission, so it was almost four years ago. We redid the bylaws back then, and having gone through COVID and some other things, noticed that there were some things that needed a little bit of cleaning up. I've also sat in front of about 18 different planning commissions and city councils across the US, and have seen a few things and learned a few things, and thought maybe we could adopt some of those to make our meetings run a little better, a little more professional, and thought that maybe we, adding those in, how, and then I'll say this, we're not always going to have a Paul, a Steve, and a Wilf on this council, on this commission, and would help give some guidance to a future chair and vice chair to be able to run a meeting more efficiently. So some of the changes that were made were simple administrative changes to clean up, and also adding in that there's mandatory training in what that looks like by state code. If you look on page, I want to say 3551, what a member is, what it consists of, what, how the members are appointed, what the duties are, and how those look. Vice chair, appointment of temporary vice chair, disclosing conflicts of interest as per state law, making sure that those are correct. Who is the secretary? The secretary wasn't defined, but that is staff. Electronic participation, we found out during COVID that electronic participation is needed. I'll just make sure that, it was in there, but we wanted to find that a little more. What regular meetings, attendance, and needs are. And then records for consideration, review, we want to make sure that applicants have their records into us no later than a certain time prior to the meeting, so we have time to review that, so that we're not having things handed to us or to staff at the meetings. We'd like to have that given to us in a timely manner. It says here, no later than 1:00 PM, two days prior to the meeting, so that we have time to review that, and then send that out to the commission members. The other things that we did is that the chair will maintain order and decorum, and to that end, we did say, put a three-minute time limit in place for public hearings, and then what, how that meetings will run, is we wanted to make sure that the rule, the order, the rules of order, and I'm trying to find it here in the meetings, that when we have an open, when we have a public hearing, that we have a public hearing, that we will first go and let the staff give their report, then we'll have the respondent, the landowner, come up, we'll give them a maximum of 10 minutes to give their report, and then we'll do open the public hearing, and then after that, if we need to have any questions of the applicant, we can have them come up, but we wanted to make sure and be specific in those, how that, how that goes, and then move through that. But other than that, I mean, I think it's, it's just some things that we, I've noticed in other meetings I've been in to help meetings flow more smoothly. I've talked with Melinda about this, and she graciously sat down and we added this in. I think it helps us have better meetings and helps us be able to run the meetings more smoothly. Any thoughts?
Yeah. I looked through these, and I have to say that generally speaking, I was really impressed. I thought the changes were well-done by and large, especially in terms of conflict of interest, and just clarifying things that this seems to really tighten our, tighten up our ship a little bit, and I think it lays out expectations on what planning commission members should do. I think we could flesh out a few things, but I think we're just getting wordy at that point, so I, I thought about making, you know, a few suggestions here and there, but I, you know, I just, I think we're good. If, the only section that gave me a little pause was on voting. I think that very first paragraph's a little confusing. It says, "No commission member shall discuss, opine, or vote on any matter deciding an application except during the meeting." Well, you can't vote on anything except unless it's during the meeting, so that kind of goes without saying, but I think the general thought there is that good public decorum and responsible behavior by the planning commission would dictate that planning commissioners should make their decision and discuss items that the planning commission has in the public forum, and I think that's just the most ethical and safe way to make sure that decisions are made, you know, when everybody is present, everybody has a chance to participate. If somebody's having the neighbors, if a planning commissioner's holding a meeting at their house to talk to the neighbors about things because the neighbors are up in arms, I think that's inappropriate. Those kinds of things need to be held in the public forum, and decisions should be made after duly considering them in discussion with the group, and I think that's what that first paragraph's trying to get to, so we might want to, I want to look at, you know, revising that one a little bit. I think we could leave that to staff, but I think that that word, "opine," really gets to the heart of it, which is, you know, don't be out as a planning commissioner, don't go out and be discussing this all over with neighbors and stuff, and, you know, and potentially stirring things up, or tipping your hand is how you may vote, but to have that done at the planning commission, so... And I really like the electronic participation and past, I've never, you know, planning commissioners haven't really been allowed to participate electronically, whereas city council people have been, so if that's correct, I really think that's great, because there may be occasions where some of us may be traveling, you know, I've been traveling a lot the last year or two, and so, and I hate to miss meetings, but there are times I could participate, and I'd be happy to do that, especially on critical issues, so... I know, I liked it, I liked it, so I'm thumbs up on this. I know, I liked it. I liked it. So I've, I'm thumbs up on this.
I, I also felt staff sedition there in 5.2, that we will not go past 10 o'clock. I really felt. I, I, one of my first meetings, we were there till like 10:45, 11 o'clock. And I really feel that, you know, I feel that sometimes, you know, the business can be, can be forwarded to another time. So no, I, I feel, I appreciate your comments and stuff. Any other comments from the other commissioners?
Commissioner, all red. I, I don't know if you can see on there, but I just added in before vote, express an intended vote. Would that?
Yes.
Take care of?
Yes.
Okay.
That really clears it up.
Yeah, I, I have, it hasn't happened here, but in the past I have had commissioners that have been out in the public or on Facebook and, and.
Yeah.
That is problematic because it is supposed to be discussed and decided on in a public meeting. So that was the intent there.
Yeah, that's really a nice little three word change. So.
And I, and I know Commissioner Summer Corn expressed his opinion on the time.
Having flexibility.
Yeah, on the, on the, whether we could.
That we just say they may be limited to three minutes to allow the opportunity for, because we, you know, sometimes we do have a packed room and we want to limit those comments, especially they do become repetitive. But sometimes we only have two or three people here and it may be appropriate to let audience members speak for a little bit longer. But that's, you know, that's obviously, I mean, all of this is really up to the planning commission. This is your meeting, these are your bylaws. We want to do what you feel like is the most appropriate. So happy to change that if you want to have more flexibility.
I think we ought to allow up to three minutes or be flexible on that. But I think it, I think, I think a three minute is typical, it's typical in most planning commissions I've been to.
Yeah.
And I think we need to, you know, you know, if, if, I think the biggest one we ever had was the, about 150 people at the fire station when we had the equestrian center. They came in, they wanted to put 460 apartments down there. I mean, we had the whole neighborhood out and everyone wanted to speak that night and we went really late. So any other thoughts by commissioners?
I think just a word of appreciation for the work that's gone into this. There's a lot of work and time, so.
One comment on the last section, 5.5, under item A. Member of the public shall state their city of residence. Aren't we really looking for name and address or name and, you know, is I'm Joe?
Name and city, they doesn't.
Name and city, yeah.
Doesn't require an address.
Did I miss that?
It just says, "Member of the public shall state their city of residence."
Name and.
Yes, we do want their name.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, we don't need address.
Yeah, we don't, yeah, we don't. That, that's what I was trying to.
Yeah.
Get at is we don't need an address, but we do want to know whether or not they're residents of the city. And yes, we do want to know their name.
Yeah.
Thank you. That's a good catch. You know, and, and on like, something I feel very passionately about is that we have a safe space for anybody to express their opinion. And so, you know, these rules of, of conduct really are meant to protect people who might be in the minority. We have had, I mean, I've had people come up after a meeting and say, you know, I didn't, I didn't want to say this because everyone here is against it, but I'm in favor of it. And so when you get those situations where people are clapping and/or booing, you know, it really does not contribute to a place that's safer people to express their opinions and that's, and their thoughts. And that's exactly what a public hearing is supposed to be about. And so, you know, the hope would be that we would have a well behaved public. But sometimes what's before the public, really, they're passionate about it. But at the same time, right, we do need to make sure that anybody feels comfortable expressing their thoughts, even if they're not the majority of.
I'll give you, I'll give you an example. There's a gentleman and I, he's been here on several issues and he comes and presents really good data. And I appreciate him because, you know, it doesn't, it adds to the conversation. But I also appreciate the fact that he's under, he's, he's not, he's, he's gaining his US citizenship. He's a citizen of Caseville. And I've watched him, I've run into the grocery store a couple of times and he corners me and talks to me about this. He says he appreciates being able to come to a public meeting because where he's from, you can't even voice your opinion. And I find it interesting to, to have that conversation because he comes and he talks very passionately about traffic and he talks about, you know, public safety issues. He talks about things that, you know, sometimes aren't relevant to our conversation that we, we can't, we can't make any motion on. But he feels comfortable coming here and talking about it. And, and I think that's important because, you know, it, it, it gives a form sometimes for that, to be able to be discussed. And I, and I appreciate the fact that we can do that. But we all need to be cognizant of, you know, people who are for or against an issue need to also feel comfortable that, hey, I'm for this change or I'm for against this change without cheerleading section and the public clamor taking over.
I very much agree with that. Can I just suggest that we strike the very last sentence of 5.6? I think it's pretty redundant. You've already got a three minute rule and you've already, yeah, that, that covers it.
Okay. Any other thoughts, commissioners, any?
Steve, I have one more.
No, you're fine. Keep going.
5.10 field trips. Field trips can be problematic for a planning commission for two reasons. Number one, well, I'll just lump it into one comment. Field trips are problematic in that if there is a quorum of the commission that goes on a field trip, then they are actually.
You have to notice it.
Yeah, you, you notice it, but you also must record conversation. You, you are having a de facto planning commission meeting. And so as much as I hate to say this, because I think field trips are one of the very most important tools of any deliberative public body before they act on items. The public has a right to know what the planning commission deliberations are. And so if the planning commission's out and about in a van and they're discussing, because I've been on countless of these and, you know, working for different cities. And you, they can be very productive. You can be getting a ton of stuff done, but you also have to be careful that you're not making your decision as a group when there's nobody listening or participating. So I think we just need to make sure on this field trip that it's not a slippery slope, that, you know, you may absolutely need to have a field trip and make it necessary, but you must provide a way for the public to attend or to accompany the planning commission and to be able to listen in and/or comment. And that's what we did at the last city I worked with is that we would say, anybody who wishes, you know, we would notice the field trip and we'd say, we'll be leaving from city hall and anyone who wants to accompany the planning commission may do so in their own vehicle, blah, blah, blah. And you would wait and we would have somebody taking notes. So you just, you have to be careful with those. So if we could maybe just flesh that out, field trips shall be noticed and discussions held in accordance to a state and city law or participation, something along that line, because you can't just go out on a field trip and have those chats and discussions without public, the ability for the public to participate. You just can't. You can be challenged on that. So. And there are, frankly, there are times when planning commissions are tempted to do that exact thing, to say, this is a hot button issue. Let's go field trip it and let's, you know, let's just, you know, let's be able to talk about this without all the heat. Nope. You don't get to just discuss it without the heat. And I had people traipsing along many times with field trips in the city I worked for and we welcomed them. And I'll tell you what, I, we made, we made a few people who were skeptics about government. We turned them into fans when they could see that we were genuine and that we were going to listen and take notes and let them ask questions. And then we would mention it when we went back to the meeting. We'd say, we had a field trip, here's what was discussed. We had members of the public with us. So I'm getting long winded about this, but I think that's important to note somehow. I would just suggest that we, we adjust that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and my experience with field trips have, have been, we've been taking the planning commission to, like, we, we took the planning commission to the Sugar House area to show what had been done there with the plazas and the paseos and the walkable and the pedestrian oriented design. And so in that instance, it wasn't anything that would have.
It's more educational.
Yeah, yeah. It wasn't anything that would have been an actual agenda item for discussion.
Yeah.
Right? And, and that would be something that we may do here simply because we don't have that type of development that exists. So, you know, we could clarify that if it is a, a field trip to look at something that will be on the agenda, that we won't vote or discuss that unless it's in a regularly scheduled meeting. And as I'm looking at this, actually, I don't know if I like this language that, that they would be held during regular meetings because.
They can't.
Yeah, that, like tonight, it's dark. You want to be out looking at that during the daytime.
Yeah. Melinda, actually, in, in holiday, we didn't hold field trips for six months out of the year due to daylight purposes. If there wasn't enough light, we weren't going to go do a field trip. It wasn't fair to the applicant, it wasn't fair to the public or the planning commission. One thing that we did, and this might be a suggestion, is that just internally, you may say, planning commission, we're going to field trip this item, but we are not going to go in a group large enough that constitutes a quorum. So with six, seven planning commissioners, you couldn't have more than three. And you couldn't then meet as groups to discuss it. You had to go separately. And that way you didn't have to record it, you didn't have to have discussion. And somebody wanted to go along with you, they could. But see what I'm saying? Just avoid that appearance of, of not being in the public realm. And so that's how we avoided that. We just said, guys, go field trip this on your own, but we're not going with more than three people.
Yeah, we, I mean, we could do that or you break up so there's.
Yep.
So it may occur at the same time, but there's one group with three.
You're going to, yep, different part.
Another group with three.
Exactly.
I mean, I, I can work on some language for that and bring it back.
I trust it to you to do it, but you see what I'm getting at?
Yeah, I do. I do.
I think you can flesh that out.
So, so the intent would be, obviously we want to make sure that we're not violating public meetings, meeting laws. We want to make sure that we notice it. And that if we are on a field trip that would directly relate to an agenda item, that we don't have discussion or voting out in the field, that that take place during a regularly scheduled planning commission meeting.
With an agenda item.
And that may be what they were attempting to do with that language in there about the, during the regular meetings.
Yeah.
But it doesn't quite get there. So I, I'm happy to work on that. Yeah, that, that would give flexibility though to, we could have a larger group if it's not something that's for a meeting, but just post that meeting at the public notice. And I have also had residents that have come and participated in those little walkabouts when we did do a field trip. And it was great to have our residents, this was in Murray, but to have the residents come along. We also went down to Holiday Village and, and it was great to have an educational opportunity for not only staff and the planning commission, but for the residents as well. So.
You didn't, you didn't invite me? Was I, was I not there?
You were retired.
We did, we hosted 31 different groups and organizations, by the way.
Wait, when did you retire? You might have still been working.
July, July of '21.
Okay.
Yeah, I was probably, probably gone.
Long gone. Okay. Any, any other thoughts? Any other?
I really appreciate this and I don't know if I have gone through this or if I was too green and didn't re, like recall it. But for me, it was really quite enlightening. I thought it was very helpful information and I think you're right for your average, you know, non-planning, you know, as far as your career commissioner. This is really needed, useful information. So I appreciate it. I thought, I thought it all looked great. It would be nice, it would be nice to have the, like a paper packet on this kind of a thing. I don't know, because I was trying to read it and by the time I had to have this little snippet of screen to see.
Yeah, the window gets.
At a time to actually make notes.
Was your window pinched like mine?
It was so, it was so tricky. I had to turn it sideways and it was only like, I don't know why, I hadn't done that before.
I had to go into a different view and then expand it to get, to see the whole page.
So it was a little challenging to try to.
Yeah.
Get a sense of it and like some notes, but overall I thought it was really great.
Well, and, and this is something that I, I think as staff, we really need to do a better job of onboarding new planning commissioners and giving this type of information and making sure it's available to the public. I, this should be on our website. I don't know if it is or not, but the intent is, you know, going forward, we would definitely have this. I think we should even have some copies available for residents to read as they come if they want to pick one up. And one of the things I would like to do as well is to communicate somehow that, that deadline of submitting information to the planning commission so that the public knows that that is there. My concern with that has been, you know, a lot of times the public will come and hand information to planning commission and there's not enough time for you to read and digest that information. If we accept that, it becomes part of the record. And if there's an appeal or some type of a lawsuit and that's part of the record, but you didn't have adequate time to review it, that can cause some issues. So I just like that we were protecting ourselves. We're giving you as a planning commission adequate time to read and interpret and, you know, and find information that can be useful. But at the same time, we're also helping the public understand, you know, hey, if, if there is a study that's submitted or some type of information that does need to be read, it's absolutely appropriate to continue an item to a future date so that you can accept that into the record, but have enough time to consider that information.
And I'll, I'll kind of say where this all started. I sat through a really, really formalized meeting with Maricopa County, not Maricopa, with Mojave County. And they have a 10 minute video you watch to start their meeting. And it lays out everything, how the meeting's going to go. And the meeting starts out, if you have anything to hand to the commissioners, you hand it to this person, but it needed to be in two days ago, it won't be considered for this meeting. We'll just shelve your item. I mean, it really goes through this whole big long thing, but it's 10 minute, it's a 10 minute video. They show before their meeting starts and their meeting's held a huge auditorium. And their agenda, their agenda is usually 120 items. And they do it over a four hour period. I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a good half day agenda. But it, it kind of got me thinking after, because I've been in Georgia and Virginia, a bunch of these places. Theirs is the most formalized and, and what, and I started thinking through, you know, what are the, what are the best practices that we need to put in place? First off, to make us more professional for our residents. And secondly, to help us run better meetings so that we were able to have, have a better meeting flow and also, you know, allow our residents to have more of a voice in what's going on. And so I think those are the kind of things I feel, particularly when it comes to public hearings. I mean, that's a really critical time and, and stuff. And the other thing is, and, and I think is, you know, what are the things that we, are, are efficiencies that we can take out that really aren't efficient for us as commissioners? I mean, there's some things there, you know, 10 o'clock meetings and some of the other things I think can go away on the agenda that we, aren't effective for us. And so I really think that as we, if we can control that, we can be better at commissioners and, and do better at what we do, which is help our community with land use laws. But we don't need a 10 minute startup video. No.
Hey, can I make one more suggestion?
Go ahead. As long as it's not a 10 minute.
I don't know, I don't know why I didn't catch this earlier, but you know, I, in thinking about the way we do business, can I just throw out an idea? And I, it's nothing, it's not a huge deal, but in terms of the way, the order that we do our meetings, can I suggest that we move minutes to the bottom of the meeting? Because if we have public in attendance, why hold them hostage while we deliberate what's in the minutes? Especially if it's a long, difficult set of minutes. You, I would just think in, you know.
Most minutes are just done on a consent agenda.
All right. Yeah, like I said, no big deal.
But it's usually, I mean, I, I don't. But it's usually, I mean, I, and it was funny, because I, I had the same thought, but most of them are done just as a consent agenda item, uh, and done quickly. If, and I've seen this in other states and other, and other jurisdictions, if there is an item, they typically move it to another meeting and then just move on. They, they don't, they don't, um, spend a lot of time on it.
Yeah, the last two cities I worked with, we, we always made sure the minutes were at the end, because, um, we would often go in and have ten, fifteen minutes sometimes with planning commissioners saying, "No, this wasn't right, no, that's not correct." And so, in, just in case, that would be the, the, if that's, if that's the issue, then why have it at the beginning of the meeting? Have it at the end, so you conduct your business for...
If you want, I mean, I don't disagree with that, Paul. I think maybe we should, because we are, I mean, if you'll notice, um, my, the bane of my existence is going away, the calls of the public. We, we, we are, we are an appointed body, we're not an elected body, we are not required by law to have that.
Yeah, I, I totally agree. But again, it's, I, it's not a big deal to me.
No, it's fine, if we, if you want to move it to the end, I'm, I'm agreeable.
We don't tend to have very many comments, but just in case we did, can you see the reasoning why it might be better to just put that at the end? Because if somebody's interested in the minutes and they've read them, they'll hang around, but if you've got a big crowd here, and you've got any kind of comments at all, just move down to the bottom.
Yeah.
Okay, I can agree to that.
All right, just a thought, if everybody's okay with it. If not, I'm perfectly happy the way it is.
I've noticed everywhere else is just a consent agenda item.
Yeah, and I, and I, and I don't agree with that.
And I think it's interesting.
Because what if planning commissioners have comments? Why do, why does everybody post minutes to act on their minutes? It's an actual deliberative item for a planning commission to review those minutes to make sure the record is accurate. And if you do that by consent, well, then it looks like, well, when, would any changes be made? Would they be sent in? And then the public, again, they wouldn't know about them.
Most of the time, we just have one set of minutes on there, and so the notion of having a consent agenda, it would be the exact same thing. You would make a motion to approve it, it's just one item. I mean, consent can be helpful when you have multiple items
Yeah.
that are, you know, very common and ordinary things, but where we just usually have one set of minutes at a time, there's not much of a difference between making a motion to approve a consent agenda or approve the minutes of a meeting with the particular date, so...
Yeah.
Okay.
We were just a little bit, uh, we were a bit real sticklers. I mean, you couldn't believe some of the things we would get. We would have seven, eight pages of minutes sometimes. So our minutes are, are very brief, but other cities, they have really detailed minutes. And so, we would ask our planning commission to go down through them and send any comments in, but you know what would happen most of the time? Staff would take copious notes during the meeting, during the meetings, and then compare the motions to their notes. And so most of the time, the planning commission would say, "I don't have anything," and then they would say, "Staff," and of course, we would have a bunch. And so they'd say, "All right, staff, just make those changes. If there are no comments, staff, just include your changes," which worked pretty well, because we were really, really hawks on making sure everything was accurate. That was just our style.
Interesting.
Just fill our pages with notes.
Well, it is important to get the minutes right, because at the end, that is the official meeting record.
That's the legal record.
And so if they are not accurate, that, you know, like, you can go back and, and watch a meeting, but if what's in the minutes is different from what's in the video, it doesn't matter, because once those minutes are approved, they are the official record of the meeting.
That's correct. That's correct.
So, I, I mean, I've, I've had situations in the past, too, where they were like, "Well, the discussion was this, and this was really the intent." Well, what the motion was, it, if it wasn't consistent with the discussion or the intent, doesn't matter, because the motion said this, that's what the outcome was.
Right.
So it is important to get those correct.
Yeah, especially if you have, and I noticed this on more than one occasion, where if you have a, an elected official who wants to go in and alter the minutes after the fact by saying, "Well, this is what I was meant to say, this is what I, this is what should be in there," they literally were pressured. I saw this happen again and again and again, and I, I saw other elected officials, even city staff, saying, "We can't do it that way. We can't, we, sorry, you can't do that." And they would protest, they'd say, "But that's not what I wanted in there." And it's like, that's not how it works. It's not what you meant to say, or what you wanted to say, it's what actually was said and what the group agreed upon. So you do have to be careful to go down through the minutes and make sure it's in accurate affection, because you're right, it's the written record that was approved that is the document that goes to court, not the recording, so...
Okay.
Didn't mean to open a can of worms with that.
What, um, what do we want to do with this tonight? Want to continue it?
I'm, I'm fine to allow staff to, are you comfortable, staff, with making the suggestions that we've got?
I think she already adjusted them all.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd, I'd, I'd want to finesse this section a little bit more, but, um, I, I think everything else we've already addressed, and if, if the commission is comfortable with my understanding of your intent, then I'm happy to just work on that. Um, just do some wordsmithing and get that intent out with the, the final language.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
So then, I, here, we want to make a motion?
I will make a motion.
Okay.
That we approve the draft changes to the planning commission bylaws as proposed in the written draft, um, the, the, in the clear copy with changes as reviewed in the redlined copy, that staff will adjust based on our discussion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. I'll start the voting. Aye.
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 And that passes. Call the public?
For the last time?
For the last time, and we will close that out? Commissioner Sunloff is not here? The Commissioner Sunloff, remember to call the public.
Yeah, that, that, that was a very strange thing. I've never seen that on a planning commission. It really is just...
And I'll go back and make a comment about that. It's interesting. And, and I said that, I've been in front of planning commissions from Vancouver all the way out to Boston, and there is no planning commission that does a call the public, because as an appointed body, you don't have to. Elected bodies do, because they represent, they represent the, um, the individuals in the community. And so we are appointed by the mayor to do a specific task, and, and for land use. So, but we do have, within, within that land use task, we have the opportunity to do public hearings, and those are different, but I think it's, I think it's important that we clean up our, um, our bylaws and do those things, so... Melinda, what do you got for us?
Well, uh, we're still working through the subdivision ordinance, and, um, the takeaway from the city council last week was that they want to try and figure out a way to have the public be able to comment, but not necessarily bring those to planning commissions. So we're, we're trying to revise the ordinance and bring back a new draft to the council that hopefully meets their intentions and what they wanted those changes to be.
I, I was standing in front of the city council giving my comments, and I got hit with a fever. So I fevered up right in the middle of talking to city council tonight. Oh, yeah. And I, I, I went home and I was, had chills and stuff, so I forgot to my, I had it in my notes, did the fifteen-day comment, and so I sat back down, I was like, "Oh, I forgot the fifteen-day," and I was like, sitting there so sick. So anyway, I apologize to you, because I forgot the two points I was going to make, which was the fifteen-day, and the fact that, you know, to make the statutory requirement for the legislature, really, this needs to become an administrative item. But I think, I mean, really, it's a, it's, I think it's, there's some good changes, but also the public comment period. Yeah, I think putting a sign on the property is probably the best workaround, but we'll see how that comes out.
Yeah. Um, you did receive an email today, the rezone that was heard on November ninth for the Webster property over on Angel Street. Initially came through as a R120 rezone. The day that was scheduled for the city council meeting, they withdrew their application, and they resubmitted another application for the R114. So instead of essentially half-acre lots, fourteen thousand square foot lots, third acre. Um, so that will be before you on, is it the twenty-fifth? And, um, I think that's, at this point, the only thing that we know of coming up. Um, don't think we'll have time to get the rezone scheduled. So we will have a few applications coming forward from the city as well. Um, the rezone for the library, when that subdivision is completed, and then there's some property down at the bottom of, or the, where nine fifty intersects with...
West Davis Corridor.
West Davis Corridor, that UDOT owns, and that'll be surplus. It's zoned ag land right now, but we intend to rezone that to commercial, so that'll be coming forward in the next few weeks as well. Probably the first meeting in February. Um, trying to think if there's anything else. Um, there's a few text amendments that I know will be coming forward. We want to change allowances in the public use zone for signs. Um, we'll be working on that, bringing that forward, and I'm sure there's lots of other things, but...
What's your feeling on, uh, legislature?
We'll just see after March first what they throw at us. So I know there's been, you know, it, honestly, it's kind of nauseating to, to know everything that's coming at you and knowing, right, like, the changes that they make, it's all unfunded mandates, they give you deadlines, it's, it's, it's very difficult, um, to, to know everything that's coming forward and, you know, but we'll just see what happens at the end. I understand that, so House bill, or sorry, Senate Bill 147 that precipitated the need for us to change our subdivision ordinance, I know they're already going to make changes with that. Um, I think the intent with that is just to clarify some things that aren't very, um, straightforward in the code. We may have to come back and revise our subdivision ordinance again after March first, so, um, I, there's going to be a lot of discussion about land use. I think that's really the main focus of the legislature, and it's going to be all centered around, I think, that trying to get modern income housing and to try and meet, uh, Governor Cox's goal of getting new single-family, um, residences built over the next few years, and...
Speaking of which, did you see a certain city in the south end of Salt Lake Valley's response to that?
Oh, yes. Uh, that was very interesting. So Riverdale City actually...
Riverton.
Sorry, yes, not Riverdale, Riverton. Um, they voted unanimously, unanimously to reject the state, um, it was the Legislative Auditor's Office that did that report on the housing. Um, they felt like it just wasn't accurate, and, uh, you know, it, I, I think the biggest thing from that was, there's a lot of entitled housing out there, and cities don't build it, developers do. Um, you know, I think in Kaseville, we probably have about two-hundred-and-fifty entitled housing units, and I've had developers say, "Don't go record this subdivision," because they don't want to pay the taxes on the individual lots. Um, you know, so there's, there's things out there that, um, I, I think really, at least my takeaway from Riverton and some of my thoughts are, you know, that the fingers have really been pointed directly at cities, and probably unfairly so, because...
Agreed.
You know, we don't have any control over when building permits are submitted. We don't have any control over when lots are sold or what interest rates are, and, um, if a developer is able to, you know, front those costs and, and build the housing. Um, so that, that was interesting, the rejection of that. I think that there might be some other cities that jump on that, but, um, I think also going forward, one of the things that I hope will happen is that, instead of finger pointing and blaming cities, uh, you know, that it becomes more of a partnership and looking at all aspects of the development process, not just entitlement and zoning, but what happens after that, because we don't control that. Um, you know, they, they, right, every year, they, they put more timelines on us and restrict our ability to, um, you know, in some instances, even to just be thorough with the process, because we have these timelines. Like, you know, the question earlier, well, how long will that take? We have fourteen days to review a single-family dwelling plan, and if we don't get corrections out to them within the fourteen days, then it's deemed approved. You know, there's all of these things that, that come towards us from the legislative session, and I think a lot of that, honestly, is just coming from one-off situations or from
Yep.
information that gets sent to the legislature that's not the entirety of the story. And I think really what Riverton is trying to do is say, "Hey, there's, there's more to it than just what you're reporting on, and let's look at it collectively instead of just singularly," which really has been the focus of the legislature over the last probably six or seven years. This has just been, you know, focused solely on cities and what we're either doing or not doing. And I think by and large, really, I mean, I've worked in Utah in four different, one, two, three, four different, um, local government agencies, and we didn't stall work, we didn't intentionally cause problems. We processed applications, and, and even here, we process applications very nimbly and quickly. Um, I was blown away in Murray how fast they process those applications. Um, so, you know, it's, it, there's more to it than just what's being, I think, conveyed. So we'll see what happens March first and pivot from there.
I want to agree with you on a lot of it. I think also, like, you know, State of Washington has put money with their mouth to say, "Look, if you're going to change zoning ordinances, let's also come in and help housing grow." And they put in grant money and some other stuff. And I mean, I think ultimately, if you want modern income housing, you've got to come in with some innovative funding to help it grow. And I think that's, you know, you can, you can, you can, you can beat down on people you want with work, with changing unfunded mandates and stuff, but eventually, you, there's got to be some sort of incentive to the cities to help, or, and to help it work.
Yeah, with the League of Cities, a lot of the discussions that's taken place around the Legislative Policy Committee is, you know, how do you feel about, um, you know, like, fast-tracking a development that has modern income housing in it? Um, well, that implies that we don't process all appi- applications in a timely manner. Um, you know, so, sure, we can expedite things, but we don't, you know, we don't hold things back. We process things as quickly as possible. And honestly, a lot of the time, it's not the city that's delaying things, it's, we sent out comments and we're waiting to get those back. Um, we meet our deadlines, but then it takes three months for those comments to come back to us. Um, so, you know, there's a lot of talk about trying to put in options to state code to expedite things. Um, again, I don't know how that really works, because we don't delay things. We, we work as fast as we can. Um, you know, and there's also a, a part in state code, and this is kind of a bee in my bonnet, but there's a part of state code that essentially says, you, we can't require a developer to put modern income housing in. If they, we can't deny their application. If they're not agreeable to it, we can't make them. And so how does that reconcile, when the finger's being pointed directly at us, but they changed state code last year to say, "We can't do it unless they agree with it"? That doesn't make sense to me. So, yeah, we'll expedite your application, but what does, what does that mean? You know, we, we say, "Sorry, this subdivision, you don't have any modern income housing, or you're half-acre lots, so you have to wait while we process this other application." I mean, I don't know what that would look like, but I think, not I think, but I know here in Kaseville, we work as quickly as we can with all the applications. So it'll be interesting, but I think a lot of it is going to be focused on land use, and what ends up happening at the end of every session is there's more work for staff to do, and that needs more work for the planning commission to review, and we'll want to make every effort to comply with the state requirements, and we'll just have to see what happens. Um, do, the, does the planning commission receive Wilf's blog?
I do.
Okay. Um, I'll have to just make a, a note to send that on to all of you, but he, um, sometimes a couple times a week, sometimes every couple of weeks, but he'll update, uh, and it's, you can find it on the Land Use Institute website. Um, but, but Wilf tracks a lot of the... you can find it on the Land Use Institute website, but but Wilf tracks a lot of this, and he'll say, hey, this is what's happened in this other state, and here's what, you know, was happening here, and here's the comments that, like, when the audit report came out, he kind of compiled a little, a, a little write-up that included comments that some of the legislators or the governor had said, and there's really some good information, especially looking at like what we think will happen in the future with changes in state law, so I'll make sure to send that on. So I don't, other than that, I don't really have much for calendar. The APA conference is coming up in April, is it in April? That'll be down in Cedar City, we'll send out information on that, we do have a limited travel budget, but we do want to make sure that we provide opportunities for the planning commission to get the training that they need, so that's another goal I have for this year is to be more proactive in getting that information out, and even just the videos and all of the information that's out there that you can do in your own time, because I know it's hard, too, to take off work and go to trainings that are out of town, but there's a lot of it that's recorded and free and great information, so we want to make sure we get that out to you as well. Be great.
Okay. If we're done, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second the motion, or motion to adjourn?
Second the motion.
So moved.
Thanks for waiting. Thanks for dropping in. Well, that's American, I apologize about that. Hey. I studied, I studied my class, and I planned on coming, I didn't write it on my phone, so I thought. Well, I did the same thing last week, I had a meeting scheduled to talk to the RBA manager for Long Island City, and it's only.